Call the meeting order. We posted properly.
The meeting's been posted according to law.
Roll call.
President Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Harding.
Here.
Trustee Moody.
Here.
Trustee Nugent.
Here.
Trustee Seager.
Here.
Trustee Wazniewski.
Here.
So please try to remember to use your mics since Joe is remote. Citizen participation per village resolution 2017-01. Anyone wishing to address the village board during citizen participation will be allowed five minutes. Your subject must specifically relate to matters under the jurisdiction of the village board. Whether on the agenda or not, the village board should not engage in a discussion regarding comments because it was not part of the publicly noticed agenda. Upon conclusion of the citizen participation segment, members of the audience are not allowed further comment unless they're participating in a public hearing or specifically allowed by a majority vote of the village board due to involvement in an agenda item. Going one. Come on up. Hit the button. It's a little people icon. State your name and address, please.
My name is Ryan Stoichov, 2855 Oakmont Drive, East Troy, Wisconsin. I'm here tonight to ask the village board to waive the fee for my kickball game. We hold a kickball game. This is our fourth annual. It costs about a few hundred dollars and then the return money gets back too. And quite frankly, I'm past it. I'm getting past the point where I'm willing to write the check. I'm just asking the village board to waive the fees for the late fee as well as for the rental and the lights for the field. This has served our community for four years. We, at this point in time, have served 264 kids in our community. We give free T-shirts to the first 50 kids, free ice cream to all attendants, as well as raffles that have been provided by local businesses here in the area. I go around and I ask them for five bucks each and everybody gives me five bucks. So I take that money, I turn it over to Gus, I turn it into gift cards for the kids. And then, like I said, Gus donates his ice cream. And this year is going to be our first time with a live band. I guess we're going to try a local kids' live band and see how that works out. So like I said, that's what I'm here for and that's what I'm asking is simply just to waive the fee for me so I can turn that money into gift cards for the kids. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. And that's item four in our consent agenda, right? The motion would be to waive the fee, right? Okay. Anybody else for citizen participation? Going once, going twice. Close citizen participation. We'll move on to consent agenda. One motion and a second will approve all the following items. Any item may be pulled from the list and voted on separately.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
No, I think Dan beat you. All right, a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Miss Laney's Business, item one, Consider Change Order Number One, Water Storage Tank Exterior Painting Project. Jason.
Okay, so what we're looking at here tonight is a change order for the project. Project's actually done. We were able to, the contractor had a window. Some other projects slowed down for them and they couldn't work on them. So they called us up and said, hey, we'd love to come to town and do your project. So they got in and out of here pretty quickly, within a couple of weeks. The change order before you is for two items. We had to do some welding on the ladder that goes up the side of the tank to access the roof hatch. And then there was more interior wet repairs that we did than we had planned on. We had planned on 10 and they're actually worth 35. So that's what this change order is for, is just to approve those two items. We're obviously well under budget yet with the change order. Again, the tank is already back in service and the project went well.
Make a motion to approve change order number one.
Second.
Questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Miss Laney's Business, Item Two, Discussion Regarding Wastewater Facilities Plan, Timing of Projects and Associated Financial Management Plan. Which of you is?
Brian's up first.
Brian's up first, okay.
I just wanted to point out to the board that I did hand out a one-page memo, kind of a bullet point of how we came to the costs that are before you that we're discussing. Didn't want to put you through the whole master planning document again, so we just came up with this one-page document for you to be able to reference tonight.
All right, so kind of why we're here, we're looking at that facility plan and, you know, in our eyes, right, from LR's perspective, technically, these are new projects in the fact that they were not in prior year's financial management plans for the sewer utility. So we thought we should obviously update the FMP to kind of match the facility plan with all of these projects in it. In addition to which the engineers can speak more closely to is, right, they have deadlines and things like that to meet in order to submit a facilities plan, in order to kind of get your funding wheels in motion through the state. So we're here tonight to kind of accelerate the FMP timeline just for the sewer utility. So then essentially, under a set of assumptions, we analyze the impact of all the projects in the facility plan with the goal of making the utility fiscally sustainable. Essentially, what that means is keep rates as low as possible while not relying on the water utility to save the day or the taxpayer to save the day. The sewer utility should kind of operate in and of itself. Not all sewer pairs, maybe water pairs, for example, et cetera. So in that, kind of our goal was, and limiting financial risk is maintaining a healthy debt coverage. The minimum that we would want to solve for is a dollar and 10 cents for every dollar of debt service. So that's kind of how much revenues, less cash expenditures, do you produce annually against your debt payment? So you want that number to be a dollar and 10 cents for every dollar of debt service. And then reserves, keeping a healthy reserve position. A lot of this is actually based off of the credit opinion that you'll probably see in a later presentation preview. Wherein, they want, the creditors want your reserves to be at about five months of operating expenses plus all of that next year's debt service payment. So in order to do this, we kind of follow three steps. We look at a historical review so we get a good understanding where the utility sits today. We have a lot of good perspective there, completing prior financial management plans. But then looking at these future projects, identifying, can we use cash? Can we use debt? And then ultimately, and most importantly, probably looking at the rate impacts for a user over 10 years. So this isn't just, let's solve it all in a day. Project costs are going to change, right? But it'll just kind of set the path based off of all these assumptions that I've spoken to. So then looking historically, there's kind of two general ways to, when we're asked, how much revenue should our utility rates have, or how much user rate revenue should we have? There's two ways to look at it nationally that the American Waterworks Association kind of accepts as generally accepted principles. One way is a cash basis, the other way is utility basis. Public Service Commission uses the utility basis for non-regulated utilities. Can be beneficial to just focus on the cash basis, just to say, what of our cash expenditures year over year, you know, are we fitting the square peg into the round hole to be able to pay for these cash expenditures instead of looking at book asset value and things like that? So when we're non-regulated like the sewer utility is, we're looking at the cash basis. So we build those three cost buckets. First one being day-to-day expenses, including operating and maintenance expense, your debt payment, and then what we call cash-funded capital. I like to call this kind of the fluff fund a little bit for the utility, just representing that this utility's goal is 24/7/365 safe disposal of your water that goes through your system. That doesn't come as an easy task. I'm sure the utility operator, and Jason can tell you that as much, but the way that I know that as the numbers guy is I can look at your maintenance accounts, right? And those get quite volatile year over year. Hence, the need to have a cash kind of adder here. Not only that, we don't want 100% rely on debt to buy new equipment, you know, like generators or other things like that that the utility needs to operate. So you do want to kind of cash fund the utility. So that's our third cost bucket. The thing that we're adding there is kind of looking at a minimum debt coverage of 1.4. So essentially, what I'm doing is saying, anytime you spend cash on the utility, I'm putting cash for capital in there, as well as 40 cents for every dollar of debt service. So that's kind of how that cash-funded capital is calculated for your third cost bucket. Subtract out your non-rate revenues, that builds your revenue requirement, and then we build kind of a rate adequacy component now. You'll see some red numbers in the middle. A lot of that, though, was done by design. We had a lot of cash in the sewer utility and we didn't think it'd be fair to go out and borrow money for that. So through the financial management plan, historically, you know, we've been kind of saying, let's spend this cash and be reasonable in how much cash we spend, but that will kind of spike this, you know, year-over-year number in those years that you spend cash. So all in all, it goes up, goes down. Primary reason is spending cash on capital. Kind of looking at the 2025 budget without any projects into it, right? We were starting to build the case, all right, maybe it's time to do a rate adjustment. So with that, I can go on to the next slide.
Just sorry, real quick, go back. What was the last time? I know we recently did a water rate adjustment. When was the last time we did a sewer rate adjustment?
I think it was 2019, if I remember correctly, because it was pre-COVID and it was pre, like, right before COVID. Because we, our study was a 2018 study and I know we updated a bunch of the rates at that time and talked through ordinance and everything, so. So it's been a while since the rates have been adjusted. But there was some excess cash in terms of, we had, the Equimeter Replacement Fund was overfunded in terms of what the DNR regulates, so we were able to un-restrict those funds. Then it kind of wouldn't have made sense, right, to say, we're going to do a rate adjustment on top of $2 million of cash, so. So for this plan, right, we're building a 10-year plan. We're going to assume no new users, so kind of usage in fixed, you know, number of customers is fixed throughout the planning period. And your O&amp;M has a 3% annual inflation. The operator and Jason have been doing a good job running this utility, you know, kind of looking historically. We have a lot more perspective than the five years just shown there. But every utility, you know, does experience some inflation. There's going to be maintenance year spikes, but generally tracking kind of along that 3% when we looked at it kind of on a seven-year basis in our analysis. So we took that 3% and moved it forward. I didn't want to predict main breaks or anything like that, so we just took a linear trend for O&amp;M expenses beyond 2025. For the facilities plan projects, they would all be funded by clean water fund loans at about 2.5%. That's kind of the current, you know, blended rate you get on those. Understand, right, the market may change. The other thing to acknowledge here is this is competitive money with other municipalities in the state. There may be an instance where you do not get funding, but I just wanted to kind of acknowledge for the time being, based off of the facilities plan and conversations with the engineers, we've assumed the clean water fund loan. But we didn't assume any principal forgiveness, what I've shorthanded PF. That's essentially, if you have a median household income that's low enough, you qualify for these things. Unfortunately, according to the state, everybody makes too much money here, so you don't get any grant funding through this program. And then the projects would be completed in years based off of the engineer's guidance. So we had a separate conversation with them, talked about timelines and things like that, which of course, they may touch on moveability within those projects, but we wanted to start somewhere, so we, you know, picked some dates. TID 5 would pay for the 2026 clean water fund loan for the school street lift station. The other part of that, though, is if we look back to the TID 5 project plan, there's kind of $1 million in cash to pay for the school street lift station and then the rest of it would go to the clean water fund loan. In that project plan, the TID doesn't pay back the $1 million advance until the end just because there's kind of cash flow, TID starting up issue in terms of available cash. So we didn't change anything from the TID 5 project plan. So we're not saying, ooh, the sewer utility's now injected with, you know, the TID paying back the advance, but it is helped by the TID paying the debt service, which the TID can afford, all other things being equal. And then the one thing that I would mention there, this will be a future problem for myself, but we'll ask for special language in the clean water fund loan in order to make sure that the TID payment on the debt service can be included as well as the advance, although it's really not supposed to be paid back until later because the state will want that to be net revenues and technically their base resolutions don't have that in. The last thing is that there'd be no TID assistance for the Honey Creek Lift Station. That was something that, when we talked about a month or so ago, I think it was in June, that there's a possibility, right, that that could serve additional customers than currently constituted for that service area. But for this plan tonight, we didn't want to assume best-case scenario. So we took that out. There's no assumed assistance from a future TID or current TID for the Honey Creek Lift Station. But certainly, you know, as you guys get into, you know, design for that, there may be an opportunity for that. For tonight, we're not going to include that. This is just a listing of the projects. Now, this is kind of a combined list for not only what's in the facilities plan, which are kind of the big-ticket items. If you see two commas, that's probably in the facilities plan for one of these projects. But the smaller projects were in your kind of, what I'll call your regular CIP that we received for the financial management plan. So this is kind of putting those two together, right? We haven't decided exactly when each of these projects for the larger ticket items will happen yet, but these are kind of the dates that, in conversations with the engineers, we've kind of picked for the time being. And then under that, there's kind of a sources of funding. The one thing I'll note there, right, you'll kind of see some ability for the sewer utility to pay some cash, but not all cash, of course. And then you can kind of see the revenue debt pieces in terms of the future clean water fund loans that would be taken on. So then looking at the future projection, so again, this is kind of taking 10-year look, and again, we're kind of solving under a base of assumptions. No new users in terms of user rate revenue, so that only changes if we do sewer rate adjustment. There's no changes in the other revenues outside of a small, it's like a half percent inflator. They're just kind of tracking with trends and the O&amp;M goes up by 3%. You take all of that, you get your net before debt in that middle line, that's got a top and a bottom border there. That's an important line to then, you weigh that, that's your numerator against total debt service. So as we start adding debt service, that of course can be problematic. However, we have the benefit here of the original treatment plant's clean water fund loan is dropping off after 2027. So you'll see in the existing debt row there, 2028 is about $650,000 less than 2027. So that's kind of an opportune time to write, backfill it, not to mention that probably means the asset life is due, hence the facilities plan. So all other things being equal, we're able to kind of structure some of that in. Now, depending on the timing, that may come to some conversations with the state, which certainly we would be there along the way to ask for such requests because the state typically does, you close, it's a, you know, once you get your final disbursement, flat PNI. We've worked out some structuring with the state in the past, so if needed to, we could figure out ways to make this happen anyway, but we just kind of wanted to point it out that, you know, the new treatment plant project, which is kind of the bigger, biggest ticket item here, would happen around 2027 so that the principal could start in 2028. The other thing that I'll mention is it kind of came up with staff discussions and with the engineers, if for some reason, the principal doesn't start until a future year, I would call that a benefit and you're just kind of collecting that cash for one year and then you can apply it as you go as well. So it may not time out perfectly. My point in all of this would be, we would make sure that the state doesn't start the new principal on the big treatment plant project until that other principal drops off. So that said, we're kind of solving these rate adjustments that you see in dark green. These would be kind of the initial adjustments to ramp up so that we are making our debt coverage that we need to. So it's kind of like a seven, little, some adjustments in the sevens, then we kind of go down to six and then fives. That also is intentional, just to kind of look at what the overall adjustment would be to a user. So I'll kind of show that in a second, but I just wanted to mention, essentially what I'm solving for is, can we meet that financial sustainability criteria? And what is the total adjustment needed in the planning period? And then I can chop it up as necessary beyond that point. So if there's a takeaway here, basically to fund this plan and assuming all other things are equal, we need about a 55% adjustment in 10 years. We can chop that up however we want to. This is just one iteration of that. So then looking at, right, those percentage adjustments, and this is kind of why I chose the wonky percentages, is trying to look at kind of what's that average adjustment to a user to kind of get to that 55%? It's about $14.50. The latter two, three percents are really just kind of keeping up with that assumed inflation. There's going to be so much stuff that changes by that time anyway, but the point would be is kind of on a cumulative basis, we need, you know, a sizable adjustment and we don't want to bite that all off in one. So can we slice that up and just kind of show that the average adjustment would need to be about $14.50 to the average user on a quarterly basis? So that's 10,000 gallons per quarter. So I'll kind of stop there. And sorry, I should have said two, that's about $58 a year. But I'll kind of stop there and see, you know, if we have any questions or comments at this time.
From a work standpoint, does this, I guess, align with what you and Tom are thinking in terms of timeline?
I think timeline's a little gray yet, right? So remember, you know, we're probably about a year to two years ahead of the game on this thing. Our permit expires beginning of '27, expires in, right? So remember, our permit is five years and in the next permit, it's likely the DNR would tell us we need to do facilities planning. So we're a little ahead of the game on this. As far as doing this as one large project, we have had conversations about it. Don't know that that's something I'd want to take on in one, you know, one calendar year. I don't know if you could do it in one calendar year, honestly. So the phasing, I think, would need to be figured out on how that happens. So I don't, I think, don't know if that answers your question?
No, it does, because then I think that would be to the timing of the debt, right? And might push us out a little bit past when that principal is paid off and...
Mm-hmm, certainly.
The only thing I will add is we all know what's happening year over year. Costs are going up, right, in this stuff?
I have some scary stories about that if anybody wants to ask.
No.
The other thing I want to make sure I'm pointing out, and I know I've pointed it out prior, but remember, we're also talking about a new well. And that is not reflected in any of these numbers because that's on the water side.
So you keep on commenting about no new users. At what level of user addition to this do we then see a reduction in these numbers?
Sure. I don't have that fastly available, but if we go back a slide, I think the way to figure that out is we know a current user who's like a residential user, right, at 10,000 gallons, their utility bill is about $750. And then if you look at the line that says dollar amount to increase to revenues and what each percentage provides, I think you could kind of aggregate, right? Just add up '26 through '31, you know, on the dark increases. And you add up those numbers and kind of divide that out by $750 to kind of say, how many new users is that? Now, what that doesn't consider is, right, there's kind of commercial users and multifamily, you know, may impact that slightly differently, so, and probably to the positive side, not to mention certain industries, right? We're not looking to add nine car washes, but at the end of the day, a car wash, you know, uses a lot of water, which in turn, obviously turns into sewer as well, so. But to get a simple number, that would be what I would do and I can provide that at a later date. But whatever you're adding, right, in users would lower that down and, you know, to the tune of however many users that total amount is, is kind of, would be the goal.
Just because it was stated, commercial users and multifamily are going to be the most impactful.
Yeah, they can be. I mean, it kind of all depends on, right, what the commercial business is certainly. But, you know, if you have a restaurant or things like that, right, they're just using more than a residential, single-family home is, so.
Leo or Tom, anything to add at this point?
Join the fun.
So just a couple, couple small comments. One thing is, when you look at Brian's presentation, which is great, that 3% O&amp;M increase kind of seems at first like, well, it's, you know, pretty small. That ends up being a pretty sizable chunk when you aggregate it over 10 years. And so I would expect that with the upgrades we're talking about, both from a new equipment standpoint, as well as essentially, there should be some efficiency gains as well, that assumption should be very conservative. This is the point I want to drive home. I'm not here to challenge and say, no, it should be a 3% decrease per year. I'm not going to do that. But from the standpoint of just, as you're looking at this in terms of, you know, worst-case scenario, best-case scenario, like, I think this is being pretty conservative.
Oh, yeah.
So I just want to focus on that. And then as far as like the sequencing of projects and sort of how you, you know, what can you put in which years, there is some flexibility there. One thing I'll point out is the treatment plant site is the site of two different projects that's laid out in here and actually in your tech memo, three different line items. It's both the treatment plant upgrades, which we've broken out into 12 million, an additional about $2 million in sledge storage, which frankly, I think belongs together with the rest of that, but I wanted to at least spell that out for you. And then another $2 million or so for the treatment plant lift station. There's going to be an economy of scale, there's going to be a mobilization benefit if that's a combined project, just from the standpoint of you're digging holes in the ground. All these sites are very close to each other. to each other as far as where new construction is happening. And so to try to pull them apart, is it possible? Yes, but there's going to be a financial penalty because you're bringing out a separate contractor, let's say a few years later. But that's, that's something we're happy to be creative and kind of look through the pros and cons on case by case basis. But just want to make sure that you guys are aware of that.
I mean, this would luckily be broken down into two phases, inside the gate and outside the gate, is really probably how it would be phased.
Yep. The last comment I would have is on the Honey Creek Lift Station. You're absolutely right. We don't want to bank in 2025. That's something that's going to be a few years out or maybe as much as five years out is definitely going to be eligible for the TID. That being said, as we've talked about in June, I'd say it's a good candidate. So we also want to give some time for some of the, the efforts to be done on that side to see if we can make that happen. That's about...
I should have asked this earlier. How many, how many rate cases is this with the commission?
None. Yeah, it's not regulated. So under your ordinance, it's adoption by the board. So last time we provided a resolution to help you guys implement the last rate adjustment.
Is there, I guess for Jason and Tom, is there any, like, this is over a long period of time here. Do we have any key people like that might be looking at retirement during this period that we need to think about?
I don't think at this point that that would be a concern for the project. I mean, the majority of it, as far as design and implementation is going to be on myself and Tom. I, I don't see staffing as an issue at this point, knowing what I know today. I mean, I guess that could all change, but I don't think that that's a concern. One other thing I had thought, Leo, in the numbers that Applied Tech came up with, what's the contingency that's in there?
Yeah, at this level, this is still a 30% contingency. So I think you talked about the fluff fund. We, at this stage, are pretty conservative.
Thank you.
Any questions? What direction, more direction do you need from us?
I mean, I guess I'm looking for an overall consensus for the board on a direction. Whatever you can provide to us at this point. I mean, obviously, this is far from, you know, being approved, but anything you can provide us now that helps point us in a direction would be helpful.
I'm really excited how proactive you are. It's not something that's necessarily being asked of you at this point, but it's anticipated because the DNR does have these tendencies to just kind of jump and say, hey, why don't you do this now? And for you to be there, active like this for us, we really appreciate it. So we're heading in the right direction and you're looking out for the entire community when you're doing something like this. So thank you.
I mean, I echo exactly what Scott said, and this is really good planning with all the, you know, we've talked about a TID 6 and, you know, other things that we're talking about later. So I think this fits in with all the good financial planning we do already. So now you're just, like, like Brian said, we just folded this in to it. So, I mean, for me, it's just, it's going to come down to timing. And I know you're waiting on some things to occur with TID 5 and you're waiting on, you know, some other planning. And like you said, we're a couple of years out on this. We want to get the debt paid off. So I would just look to you guys to continue to refine the actual plan, maybe the contingencies, 20% instead of 30, you know, you know, costs are going up, costs are going down, whatever that is, and just continue to refine the model. And then when you are ready to come and have that conversation to say, okay, we need to talk about this for '26, or we need to talk about this for '27, you know, then let's do that.
Remind me the timeline on DNR approval of the facilities plan.
Yeah. So DNR takes their, their time when they get a facilities plan in their hand. Usually they ask for 90 days. In reality, that can stretch quite a bit longer than 90 days, in my experience. We would like to get it approved by DNR this calendar year. And the reason for that is a different client of ours, I'll just leave it there, the population projections changed on January 1, and then all of a sudden, the facilities plan that we had done and submitted before Christmas or at Christmas was no longer relevant. And so they had us go back to the foundational pieces. We don't want that to happen again. I wouldn't expect that to happen in this case, I want to be clear. But I would like to get this approved this calendar year. I, and so to your, Matt, you were asking before about changing contingencies. Generally, the way we would do this would be at the facilities plan level, which is really kind of the roadmap for the community for the next couple decades. We wouldn't necessarily dial down the contingencies there. But as we get into later phases, we get into pre-design, we get into design, those contingencies keep going down to, you know, 20 and then down to 10 as we get more and more detailed. So my, my perspective is as long as the, the scope and the general timetable, not the particular month of, of which year, but the general timetable, if you guys are in support of that, and if, you know, you guys are obviously on the same page, what I would want to do next would be to actually have a public hearing. And so that members of the community could specifically come if they have, we would present this kind of information again and then give the public a chance to, if they've got comments. We would basically spell out what kinds, what kinds of rates impacts are going to be happening, if not the actual rate impact, the specific timing of it. That, that piece doesn't need to be spelled out quite yet.
So we would do that prior to submitting to DNR? So in other words, we would have...
Sorry. It does not need to happen prior to. It's nice to, but any time between when the, basically any time before approval. And so sometime in calendar year '25 is what I would like to do that. I'd be ready to go whenever you guys said so. But ideally, if we could submit the facilities plan, everyone's comfortable with it, I mean, I'd say before Labor Day, that would be great, just so that we can hit that 90-day at least timetable. If we want to do it sooner than that, I'm great with that, too. So.
What do we need to do to submit? Does it need to come back at all to Village Board for anything? Is it require a resolution?
It does not require a resolution. It does not need to come back to Village Board unless you guys would like it to come back and look at it in more detail. The, the public hearing a lot of times serves as a nice kind of culmination of this early planning at the village level because it kind of gives everyone sort of one last crack at it. We would basically, the document itself would be available to the public prior to the, the hearing. And so that kind of really brings it out to the, to the fore.
So if I'm sitting here listening to this, one question I would have is if we submit this facilities plan with all these projects that we have, that we have presented, does that, does that commit us in the DNR's eyes?
No, no. In fact, I'm on the NR 110 Committee right now and we're talking about how does a facilities plan fit into all of these other documents, like plans and specs? And Brett Schmidt, who chairs that committee, he's, he would be our plan reviewer, he has made it crystal clear. He sees this as, this is a roadmap. This gives you an idea of what kinds of projects need to happen. But if, if we describe one type of lift station in the year 2025 and in 2030, when Honey Creek's going in, as an example, we pick a different type, they're not going to say, well, you said... That's, that's the level of detail that we get. So this is really the, like I said, the roadmap, not the, not the detailed directions quite yet.
Okay. Any comments from the board on that? Any of that?
Um, have you...
Public hearing?
Public hearing, thank you. But just let, I think it's a good idea.
I agree. I think a public hearing is, is, well, and it's a requirement, correct? So we definitely want to do it. I guess the timing is kind of up to us, if you'll...
What, what type of class public hearing is that?
That's a good question. Let me get back to you. On that, I, I believe the notice period, I want to say it's like three weeks or so, but I can, I can confirm that.
Yeah, just, you'd said Labor Day. So, I mean, we only have two meetings in August. We have a meeting on the 4th and we have a meeting on the 18th.
Both of which I will be going for.
And if we wanted to do the public hearing, let's say in September, we could, again, submit to the DNR. And if, one of the things that I've done in the past is, let's say comments come through and, you know, there's something against what's in the, the facilities plan itself. We can still, at that point, we're in review with the DNR, but it's not like no revisions are possible. And so if we had a whole bunch of comments that one way or the other, hey, we need Honey Creek to be put in in 2027, let's say that was the overwhelming comment, which I don't expect to hear. We, we could, or we could basically amend that submittal for DNR and I wouldn't expect any kind of pushback.
So, I, are, we have one meeting in September and that's the 15th?
Sure.
Okay. So gives you guys a little bit of time to get more specific, as much as you want to be more specific, and then post the notice.
So I just want to understand what you're saying. So we're still talking about submitting prior to Labor Day, but yet have the public hearing September 15th? Is that what?
Yeah. And then if there's going to be a, you know, if, if there's significant changes that come out of that, like, do an amendment.
Right. Does that make sense? Absolutely. I don't think anyone from our friends at the department will be actually reading it when I submit prior to Labor Day. So.
You guys good with that?
Okay. Thank you.
Brian, anything on, from your perspective after all that?
I would just say that my intent would be, right, in the regular timeline that we would usually have, we'd talk about the utilities, I think, in October. I'd probably just say we should revisit it so that if you guys do want to do a 1126 adjustment, which I would recommend doing, because the magnitude of each adjustment will change the longer we wait, we can revisit this to talk about it. And, you know, if you just kind of say, maybe we stick with the 5%. I, I'm not committed to the, you know, like the cadence or the amount of the rate adjustment in each part. I am on the whole, if that makes sense.
That makes sense. And, and that's why I wanted to ask, too, about when the last time we did an adjustment in 2019. So, I mean, if we did something in 2026, that's seven years that we've gone. And through the past few years, it's been a pretty high inflationary environment. So I think that's pretty good.
Yep.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Brian, you guys stay, I think.
Hi.
You guys swap paperwork. Okay. We're on ordinances and resolution, Resolution 2025-10, Resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,220,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2025A. There is posted online, an amended resolution that has a correction here.
It's not a correction, it's a detail of the sale results.
Sorry, it has the sale results. Apologies. Questions or comments or discussion on 2025-10? So I guess my question is, the agenda says 2,220,000 and this says 2,185,000. So it came in under.
That is correct. I can walk through the whole pre-sale report or just the notes, but essentially you got some premium in today's offering. If you remember what premium is, they essentially pay you cash upfront for higher coupons in terms of what your, you know, maturity interest rate is at each maturity. But the re-offering yields in terms of where it trades today is, is lower, right? So you just get paid upfront for that. So we're able to downsize the issue by $35,000. But I can work through, walk through kind of the results if you want to quickly go through those. So on the first page of what I handed out, we restate the purpose. I'm not going to do that here today because we've already talked about it a few times in terms of what the issue is funding. But you did get a rating on this. You, you held firm at your most recent rating, which was actually an upgrade prior to the last rating. So we're still at AA3, which is great news. You did get five bids. It's always good to get more than one bid, of course, hence the point of going for a competitive sale. We typically see three bids, so five goods, five bids is really good. I would say the reason for that, right, is just kind of the credit profile of the village. The low bidder was BOK Financial Securities, so that's who's purchasing it. The comparison of lowest to highest bid, more detail on this in the tables that we provided, but just kind of looking at the low bid versus high bid and kind of explaining why we recommend communities go to the open market on a competitive basis. If you were to just go negotiate this with an underwriter, right, you don't really have a frame of context of could we have done better. But today, in terms of who is willing to bid on it of those five bidders from low to high, you can see the difference in interest rate. That saved the village about $75,000 over the life of the loan there. So good news certainly to kind of stand behind the recommendation to go for a competitive bid. Beyond that, kind of scrolling down a little bit, just some notes here. Bond Trust Services will again be the paying agent on the notes. All, all they really do is kind of help make sure that you have timely payments. The other thing is, this came with some term bonds, so there's fun little call notices that need to go out. So you're just kind of continuing your services with Bond Trust Services to help with all of those elements. The notes after 2035 are callable. Therefore, unless the tax law changes, which they bring back advanced tax exempt refundings, I don't see that happening. But essentially, think of this as non-prepayable until 2035. That said, there really might not be an issue to do that, just considering the interest rate market on the grand scheme of things. And then the closing date, when you can expect to receive funds and hopefully somebody's here to answer the telephone, because that's an important $2 million wire, August 14, 2025. So. And then we would recommend adopting the resolution. But I would just say, in terms of my notes here, if you want to flip through to each table as we go, you can. Otherwise, the notes summarize it pretty quickly. You got premium and there's also lower cost of issuance that we estimated. So like on Table 1, you'll kind of see that we had about 108,000 in cost of issuance and that came down lower. Again, we only really know what we're going to charge. Hard to know what the other third parties will charge. We do like to be conservative there. So that helped as well as the premium offer is they just give you cash upfront to downsize the issue. In terms of Table 2, that's kind of the final allocation of debt service by purpose, meaning how much is the levy paying? How much is the utilities paying, TID paying, et cetera? All in all, from our pre-sale estimate to today, you have $132,000 of total less debt service. The reason for that, of course, 35,000 due to the lower principal. And then the interest rate environment was kind of way down, then back up, but it ended lower than where we expected it to. And it basically came back to where we were at the pre-sale. So if I would have estimated no conservative buffer on the day of the pre-sale, we would have basically landed on where we were. But I was taking kind of a five-month trend where the yields were going to be conservative, right, just acknowledging from the time that we developed the pre-sale report to when we sell, there could be market movement. The issue here is, although it's to the benefit of the villages, right, the market just went up, up and down and came right back to where we were. So then the tax impact on Table 3, really there is the impact for the first levy year, which would be your 2025 levy for your 2026 budget year, is about $40 to a $250,000 valued property. And then beyond that, $4. And then the rest of it is flat or decreasing there. We did also provide kind of the financing plan tax impact to update the tables from our June meeting, which includes your future issuances as well. So nothing changed on the future issuances, but we've updated it as this to be actuals now on Table 4. So there really wasn't that much change outside of the benefit of less $130,000 on the debt service for this issue. For general obligation debt capacity, you get up to about 35% of your total capacity with remaining dollar amount capacity of 21.1 million. So again, that's kind of a limit, not a goal. So we kind of recommend communities stay around 50%. Certainly, there can be legacy projects that spike you above that. But that said, you're well below that 50% and you, you remain as such throughout the, you know, CIP full plan as well. And then in terms of all-in debt coverage, we kind of already covered that. The utility portions of this is pretty small, so there were no real concerns there. I would say the bigger, you know, debt service coverage is going to be when we're executing those big sewer projects and then the well project, which we'll analyze the well project when we get to the water portion of the financial management plan. And then one other thing is I provided a BBI graph, which is a, an index of kind of where the market has been. However, it's not great to be indicative on kind of how did we price? So I can provide this in more detail. It's a nerdy chart that we have in a It's a nerdy chart that we have in Excel, so I tried to just summarize it in words here. But essentially, on average, compared to other deals that are very similar credit-wise, as well as kind of par amount, meaning they don't have, you know, huge maturities that are wildly different than your offerings that can be more attractive. So we're trying to get as apples to apples. The village priced about 0.12% better than all these other like transactions within the past two months. So again, I think that speaks to kind of the credit worthiness of the village. But again, those are, when we're taking those similar transactions, we're taking the same credit worthiness. So it was an attractive offering and I think great sale results at the end of the day. And then I did attach the rating report as well. Could not encourage you enough to either use that as a sleep aid or look at the factors that lead to an upgrade versus factors that lead to a downgrade. If you're going to read only one thing in that, could not stress enough to read that. It kind of gives you pointed evidence of what the rating agency would be looking at to potentially do an upgrade or potentially do a downgrade. Biggest thing there is fund balance, fund balance, fund balance. So we obviously focus on that through the financial management plan. Staff's kind of instilled a good working etiquette in terms of how that's treated annually for budget surpluses and things like that. So I would just say kind of change nothing when it revolves around that and be intentional with your fund balance if you're going to use it. And then the other thing in terms of upgrade that they always say is, you know, if you had a more robust economy and things like that, those things, of course, you can't control. So I would do the things that you can control and kind of continue the financial management practices that you've been doing. If the growth happens, the growth happens. But at the end of the day, you can only control so much of that. So that's kind of the general message there. It's like a 20-page document, though, so. With that, I can take any questions or let you go to your motion.
I'd make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-10 for the Resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,185,000 in general obligation promissory notes, Series 2025A.
Questions or discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Staff reports. Thanks, guys. Have a good night. Staff reports, June financial reports, financial reports, variance report, airport financial and capital budget versus spend. Any questions for Eileen? Anything you want to highlight? Is there any? Yeah. Who's could be, play the role of 40? All right. 2025 Police Department Second Quarter Report.
So I got a question for you on that code enforcement. I noticed there's one property on Graydon that has a, you know, like habitual same item being on there, about a car and parking and since 2024, it's on that report.
Yeah.
Was there any resolution on that?
He's been issued twice. And this last time, he was, he didn't show up to court the first time. So then she started over with him because he was found guilty because he didn't show up. So then she started over with him, got the citation, then he showed up to court. And I think our village attorney gave him a certain date that he had to have everything taken care of. And if he doesn't, then we start all over again.
I just saw the same one, not, not for six months, but for a year.
Yeah.
It just seems like a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been... Yeah, that one. And then there's one on Bula Avenue, too, that we issued. She started over with him. I think he's coming up close again to getting issued. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything in there you want to highlight?
The budget, I guess. I just highlighted, I think it's on after... So maintenance for squad vehicles. I'm already double and it's only June through the first half of the year. We've had some bigger repairs. One was all of the injectors or cylinders had to be replaced in a squad 3,000 miles after it went out of warranty. So that was quite a bit of money. And then another squad, the water pump went. That was also past warranty. And because of the, where the water pump is located, it was more of a labor-intensive repair than the part itself. And then we've had two squads with emergency light issues that had to be repaired. And then this weekend, we had another squad have light issues come up. So those are going to have to be repaired now, too. So. Yeah. Unfortunately, it's, it is what it is. But I just wanted you to be informed that we're getting up there. So I'm hoping next year it'll be better because we'll get rid of one squad and then that other one will turn into the SRO and then we'll have another new one. So, and I, I think we've been having, the two squads that we had the big repairs on were both the Fords. These Dodge Durango's seem to be doing well maintenance-wise right now. So hopefully that continues.
Other questions? All right, Committee Reports, Library Board Minutes from June 10th. Mary, anything?
Just wanted to update the board that there's been two meetings so far with the architectural firm. Doing some outreach. They were out at the movie presentation at Booth Lake. They're going to be at First Friday. They're trying to gain additional information from the public as well as the, the library board as they're moving ahead with some ideas, what plans.
I have no questions for Mary. Item 2, Plan Commission Draft Minutes from July 14th. Questions for Brian or me? Okay. I will move that we go to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 1985-1E to discuss villages' bargaining postures and negotiation strategies with respect to preliminary contracts as to possible future TID 4 developments.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
President Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Harding?
Yes.
Trustee Moody?
Yes.
Trustee Ugent?
Yes.
Trustee Seager?
Yes.